Okay, let's stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President? Here. Vice President Clemens here. Mr. Dali here.
As was stated in our previous meeting, as well as all the publications, we're starting this meeting early so that we can begin to review the policies. And tonight, we're going to attempt to get through the first 15 of Section 1,000. And we're hoping Evan will be joining us shortly, and hopefully Margaret as well. So, Policy 1110 is where I thought we'd begin.
So, I actually did this not by just reviewing what we had, I actually...
Sorry, where's the mic? Oh, I'm sorry.
I did go to look what we had most recently as a full policy manual on the website. As you all know, there's a bunch of different policies on there. Almost all the policies that are separate policies that exist outside of the 550-page document, am I saying things you know already? I don't know. Yeah. Are not 1,000s.
The public doesn't...
Right, are not 1,000s. Right? They're all policies that we've adopted since Diana was here. Typically, they're like, my memory is they're in the 5, 6, 7,000s. So, what I did do was I started, I also downloaded the corresponding policies from the existing manual that's on the website. There's not perfect correlation across the two. And it helped me, actually, at least, with the first few policies, I was a little confused about the structure of them. And so, I don't know, did either of you do that cross-check?
No, I did not.
Okay.
I was going by. Some of them had the initial...
So, there's not, there's not, I'm not exactly sure where the, there's not perfect correlation, I guess I would say, between how, what's numbered in the newest version, the version that we're reviewing, and what's on the existing policy board. So, one of the first recommendations I would like to make, based on my reading of these, is how the first handful of policies, especially the one, the 1100s, and the beginning of the 1200s are structured, I actually liked better in the previous, in the existing policy manual, and not the new policies that we're reviewing, if that makes any sense.
Well, it makes sense, but, I mean, I guess the question is, why did we, why were they shifted?
Right.
So, it looks to me like there may have been, I don't know. I don't, I don't know why.
Because if you look at the bottom of, let's say, 1110, right? It says that it was adopted in June of 1998 originally.
Uh-huh.
But are you saying the one...
So, some of, so some of them are. So, in particular, so here's, here's where I began to get confused, was that, that I didn't understand, in particular, if you look at 1120, I guess basically, there's a shorter version of what I can say, is I'd like to see what Erie Bosse's recommends for policies 1110, 1120, and 1130. Because, as well as 1210, 1220, and 1230. Because what we have right now is we have 1110, 1120, and then we skip to 1230. And in my reading of that, and comparing to the policy manual that's on the website, it's missing some pieces, and there were some pieces that I didn't understand. So, in particular, my initial confusion began...
Well, maybe why didn't I tell you what was done, so maybe that can help you?
Well, so there's not exact, they actually really don't match what's on the policy board, what's on the policy manual.
On the website.
On the website, right.
Where is our policy manual on the website currently?
Well, yeah, now, so it just changed. Right, it's just...
You still access it the same way. You go to, sorry, 'cause I'm driving you crazy, aren't I? You go to the district website.
Yeah.
And you go to Board, and you go to Board Policies, and it takes you to the same Google Drive that's, that that link has, has been taking us to for a while. But if you want to start and tell us, since we started without you, that would be fine.
Okay, so what, what we, what I did is I took what we had on the web, of ours, and then I took what we have from Erie Bosse's, and then I compiled the two together. And there were some places that it was in the Erie Bosse's in a different place than it was in ours.
Right.
And so, I, I just kind of linked them all together. So, you will have policies that no longer exist because they're infused into other policies.
Right. So, I guess, and that's, that's fine. The whole purpose of doing this is to improve our policy manual. But where I first got confused was in what we now is the new 20, proposed 2018, 1120, there are two sections of that, so 1120I and 1120J, to me, didn't read as qualifications, numbers, and terms of the office.
So, I think if you want to understand all the kind of complexities and, and see how things are coming together, you're gonna have to sit with me when we do them.
Okay, and I could do, I actually sat and did that to some extent by myself, looking at what was on the board and, and what was on the, what was on the website and what's here.
But it almost sounds like you may be working off of a different manual than what's on the website?
No. Oh, well, that's possible, that's possible.
I think you're working, I think you're working with the new Erie Bosse's manual that they may have sent us two years ago.
Working with the actual hard copy manual of our board policy, which is up to date.
Ah, which, which, right, which we don't have access to. Basically...
This is what Margaret was saying initially, is that she wanted to see a copy of the original. So, maybe that's what we have to do going forward, is taking the originals?
Right.
Or what do you think?
I don't know. I, for the, my, really, my only real confusion, to be honest with you, was with what has happening between, in the, in, in 1110, 1120, and, and up to 1230. And I'll, I can, I can lay it out specifically. So, for example, in 1120, I think that 1120I and 1120J look to me like they would have been what was originally, what we used to call the Board of Education Authority. They didn't seem to me like qualification, qualification numbers in terms of office. And so, I wondered about that. I wondered what, I wondered if we were missing something, because we jumped from 1120 to 1230, and I'm assuming that these did come from Bosse's, and so I was wondering what was in 1210 and 1220. In particular, we're missing a policy on nomination and election?
Which may be embedded in another one. So, what I have is I have all the hard copies with notes on every one and where everything goes to.
Goes to.
So, you may need to see those notes. Because that, that's the blueprint of how these policies were created.
Maybe.
Or you, or we, or you need to sit with me.
But isn't that the point of this discussion? To go like over 1120 and to say, hey, I and J, or HI, whatever your questions are, I'm not sure if we need those, or if they should be in here? Like, we talk about any policy, and then we say, we explain it, or we change it, or we put it somewhere else? I mean, isn't that the point of this conversation?
It is, except, it is.
But I think Peggy's not...
Except my, except my, I'm actually kind of in the same position, and maybe Diana's right, and to some extent, I'm, I'm, I think I'm sitting in the same place as Margaret is when, when Margaret first mentioned this, is at this point, if we look at what we were given most recently, because I think the full policy manual only exists on paper in the district's office, it's hard for me to go, to make, to consider these thoughtfully in the absence of knowing what they're replacing. Although, I'll be honest, the only cases where that really, where that was really a problem were in these first few policies.
I don't know that that's really the case, but I started to, some of these had, when the original was adopted, so I'm assuming those were ones that there was really no clear change to, right? The other ones that have no adoption date were changed somehow. Am I right?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
So, at the bottom of these, some of them have an adoption date. So, 1110 has an adoption date of 6/9/98. However, this is not the original 1110 from 1998.
It could be.
So, my understanding was the red, the highlighted red were kind of like either things that were being changed or consolidated from multiple policies, bringing our alert...
Well, it's actually been added, but the other pieces were consolidated.
So, the full 500-page policy manual, that's a PDF, that's on our website, is really not the most, it's not the most current. The most current is...
Honestly, we don't know.
We don't know.
It just, it's not, it hasn't been kept up, and it's very confusing at this point, so...
It hasn't been a live document, like a living document.
Right.
It was put up at some point and then forgotten about.
Right, and there, there have been new policies that have been created that haven't been infused into that, that have been infused into the policy manual.
Little extras here and there that don't currently live on yet.
Yeah, but I'm looking at this I and J too, and I don't know if that belongs there. I think it, I would, I'm gonna have to go back to my notes.
Well, I looked at I and J, because I have a note here too, saying...
Yeah, so I'm gonna have to, I have to see what, where, what my notes were that Linda followed up on, so we'll have to do that. But the, but the, what I can give you, and that may help, is all of the policies that were compiled into this packet of 15. And you can see where I would circle part of it, and I would say, take this from this policy, take this from this policy. And then if there was a, there were sometimes were standalone policies that also had the same text replicated in another, and we just tried to make it as succinct as it could be.
So, would it be helpful, Peggy, are you thinking to have, at our, like our next meeting, to have the living document here?
Although, even to have that here would be helpful.
Just to check in at...
Yeah. Or I could go even and go in and...
Or Diana, if you had a question, you're like, oh, I don't remember, and then you could just look it up.
It's, um, 'cause actually, once we get past 1230, I actually, to me, it all started to, it, it all started to make a lot of sense. I really saw, I really saw where the, I could see, even if they weren't highlighted in red, it was easy for me to see where the changes were. It was really just those first, the 1100s and the, and the initial 1200s, where I was having some trouble. And, and part of my confusion could have been caused by the fact that I was referring to a, a document that was much older. I mean, if you look at what's on the website, it goes back to way before when Diana started here, you know?
So, then would it be helpful, go ahead. I was just gonna ask if it'd be helpful to go through the policies and to highlight things that we have questions about, and then maybe, Diana, you can answer the questions, or maybe not, maybe you need to go back to the big Bible and look at your notes.
You just, I mean, I'll, I'll try to give you the clearest picture I can, but I just need to know what the questions are.
Sure, and I, I think we have quite a few. So, I must, sorry, to hijack the conversation like that. I read 1110 as definitely what the title says, School District and Board of Education Legal Status. The new paragraphs actually come from what was 1120 in the previous manual, which is Board of Education Authority. If there's a real rationale for that to be in 1110, that's fine with me. I liked the structure, I'll be honest, I liked the structure in the older manual of how the organization of the Board of Education, I thought it just broke it up nicely. So, those two red paragraphs in 1110 had been 1120? And they're probably...
Well, I mean, we're just gonna, you know what, I think instead of, I'm just gonna have to bring you the notes, because...
Okay, sure.
Most of the things that were included in others were things that came from the Erie Bosse's.
And that, and that makes sense.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, and like some thing, you know, like the Board of Education, as the individual board members have no authority individually, that sentence is repeated in 1120.
Yeah, and you will find that that happens.
But sometimes I think that that's appropriate, you know, if you want to have emphasis on something.
And it could be in different chapters too. You may see the same information in multiple chapters, depending on how people are looking up the information.
Okay. I don't think it's gonna be very productive this evening, but we'll just go through the first 15, or what, or...
Yeah.
Am I hearing that you're not ready to do that? Do you want to see the other stuff first?
There's also a part of me that thinks if we started a little bit later, we could actually make a lot of progress, unless you all don't think so. Like, by the time I got to 1230, it was all, it was all very clear to me what was happening.
So, you want to skip the first...
The first two?
First two.
Yeah.
Let's start at 1230?
Yeah.
That's fine.
So, but in, and also, I think, in, in moving forward for next time, the one thing that is missing in, in what, in what we have, is we do need to see, whatever the existing policy is, we have qualifications, but nomination and election, that's, that's missing.
Did I look forward? Was it another, like a forward policy? Did you look? Yeah, and it's not there.
Some of it fell under 1120.
It's missing, what we have in 1120 is missing a lot of what's in our old...
Yeah, I have to see, because I don't think I and J are supposed to be in this policy. I think they were moved into, they should have been moved into a different one.
Again, I think, I really think there's, I think if we got a new take on the 1100s and the first two 1200s, I think this would be smooth sailing. But starting with 1230, I didn't have any comments.
I didn't have any comments on 1230. Did anybody else?
Uh, no, I just have red checks.
Okay, good. 1240?
I had one place on 1240 where I thought we could just add a parenthetical statement that I know I had trouble understanding when I first read it. So, the first sentence is, "Or by filling a written resignation with the district superintendent of the supervisory district..."
Yes, Bosse's.
And I thought later on in this document, it has parenthetically the Bosse's district superintendent. I think it would, it would, it would improve the readability to have parenthetically, i.e., the Bosse's district superintendent, just because I didn't actually know what that meant at first.
Well, and I actually circled the same thing, the second paragraph from the bottom, where it says, "In the event of death, resignation removal from office or from the school district, or refusal to serve as a board member, the district." I'm, that's halting, it's not the supervisory district.
That's right, that's us.
District superintendent is more of a New York State terminology than it is in this region.
Yeah, I think so, yeah. The district super, so, but, so to me, district superintendent of the supervisory district, I wasn't sure what that meant until I got later in the policy, so I just thought adding, again, just putting parenthetically right there, i.e., the, the way it says it later on, which is Bosse's district superintendent.
I had a question about the resignation. Have you, Diana, have you ever heard of anything where, to address, as far as, it gives the option, we've always had the option to either have a special election, or to adopt, or to just appoint someone until the next election? Is there, have you ever heard of anything where, if the resignation is within, with more than six months towards the election? Like, what I'm getting at is, let's say someone was elected in May, and then resigned in August. So, you know, as far as what I'm getting at is, it would prevent someone from running, knowing that if they get elected, they're gonna resign in order for a board to appoint someone else, to kind of circumvent that. So, have you ever heard of anything like that, where there's a time, where if there's more than certain amount of time before the, the, the general election, you can't appoint? Have you ever heard of anything like that, or...
No, but I would think that, I would, that would be more of a my question. I haven't heard of it, but he, he would probably have a clear understanding of it.
Right, okay.
We had that situation with Gillian resigning?
Yes, it did happen, because, yeah, yes. But, and, but, and that's fine, and we, we appointed because that's what we had to, and not that there was anything going on, and that was a situation that she had to resign. But it would just, I mean, again, I'm thinking bigger picture. I'm thinking, I'm thinking that, I'm thinking school board 10 years from now, when we're not, none of us are on it, that, I'm, that's what I'm thinking, that it just prevents down the line for something like that from happening, that someone could, could run for election, knowing that, to, to allow for someone else to be appointed that may not be able to win in the general election. Again...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
You know what I'm saying?
Oh.
So, I...
I, I don't know. I feel, I feel like if, if Erie Bosse thought that was necessary, it would be in the policy. I also think that the fact, I also think that the fact that someone has to have a petition signed by 25 people, or, you know, or 2% of the district, I think really should, is enough of a safeguard to prevent that from happening?
Okay, I mean, I'm just, I mean, again, it's not about proving it, it's just, it's just a preventive matter, and I'm not saying if it did happen, then something is going, is, is happening, like, it happened once here, and I'm not, and nothing, I'm not, nothing went on with that. But I'm just saying bigger picture down the line.
To prevent some...
Prevent something like that happening.
I hear what you're implying.
Okay? I mean, again, again, the idea of what we're doing now is we're setting policy that, you know, 10 years from now, this policy will be in effect. So, if this is not, we're not setting a policy for the next year or two. So, I'm, I'm just saying, and again, I'm not looking to make up a rule that no other board in New York State has. So, that's why, that's why I'm just asking, have you ever heard of, of something like that? So...
That's interesting.
I mean, it could happen.
It could.
It could happen that way.
It could, and, so...
But the whole board has to agree to the appointment. So, if that person was being, you know, disingenuous by running and then resigning quickly, the whole board has to agree to the appointment.
Yes, of course.
So, there's a safeguard in that, like...
Okay, yeah, no, I know.
Y'all, we have a lot more policies to get through.
I know, I'm not looking, I wasn't, I was...
I didn't have a discussion about you.
Yeah.
Sorry.
We can move on.
All right, 1250, I had no questions.
No comments.
No comments. 1260, I had none.
I have a question about A, and it, maybe it's a question for Julia, but, so it says, you have to sign, you get 25 people, 25 qualified voters to sign your petition, or 5% of the registered voters of the district. Do you do that calculation before you send out the sheets or whatever? How does that work?
Oh, 5% of the registered voters of the district who voted in the previous...
That's right.
Right, yeah, I do the calculation, and it's always under 25 voters, so we have 25 voters.
Okay, so you do the calculation, and before you like make the packets to hand to people? Because they would need to know, when you're handing them the packet, if they have to get a different number than 25. Is that how it works?
So, we had something like 800 people vote in the last election? So, yeah.
So, the only thing I want to...
It's okay.
Yeah, it was more a question just on your process. So, you do the calculation, and then you set it up?
Yeah.
You let the people know what they have to do, what they have to get or not get?
Yes, yes.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. 1270?
No comments.
Um, there was no comments there.
I have one question about 1270.
So, the end of the first sentence, or the very last line on the first paragraph, is the adoption of the annual budget and school district, public library budget and referenda? Is that referring to the fact that we now, if the, if our local public libraries want us to, to collect taxes for them?
It's on ours forever now, right? Because it was voted on... The, well, Ann could speak to this more, although she's busy right now, but yeah, the, whatever it was, two or three years ago, we had the, the library referendum that was added to our, to our budget vote. That's, it's permitted by law, so, yeah, we, that is, you know, we, we pass through the, we collect the tax, we pass it through straight to the library. So, it, it is part of the, I'm not quite sure what the question is, but it is referring to the...
Peggy, was this on the prior? It was not.
Oh, which is why...
Which I, I'm assuming it's because we now have the library tax on ours.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought, but that was my one, that was my one question about that. The adoption of the annual budget and school district, public library budget and referenda. I guess, actually, I guess I do have a question about what that, what, what that means. Not that it's really all that relevant for the exact policy, but, all right, that's all.
Okay. Should we keep going?
Yeah.
1310.
I don't have any questions.
I didn't have any questions, but I also thought this was a great add regarding the indemnification. But was this someplace else?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
But what was your question, Laura? Sorry, was this...
The indemnification clause was added, and I just asked Dr. Bowers if this was originally in a different...
It was probably its own policy, and then we moved it this, because it doesn't have an adoption date. This tells you it's the Erie Bosse's one. So, we got rid of the singleton, and we just added it where, where Erie Bosse's at it.
Okay.
No comment? I thought it was good.
Well, I mean, so...
There is a question as to, school board members donating or doing work, not directly, but maybe indirectly. This policy, was it always written this way?
Yeah, I mean, should board members be allowed to donate money to the school district? That's kind of one question. And I don't know that it's, it's kind of implied with the idea that it's about benefiting personally? Would there be a conflict of interest? Is there not a conflict of interest? Is there some sort of, hey, if a board member has a kid in their classroom and they donate supplies to the classroom, that's no big deal, but if they donate $5,000 somewhere, is that a...
1311?
I don't see the part about donating. I see the part about vendors and...
Yeah, but it's kind of, it's come up for me because the, it's, it's twofold. When, the idea is that the board member isn't supposed to have a conflict of interest. So, can they benefit from something?
Well, it's saying the board, not the board member. They're saying the board as a whole, as a unit.
Okay.
Well, that, that changes it.
Changes things.
Which an individual, they're saying the board itself can't enter into a contract if there's some kind of conflict of interest with somebody on the board.
The board itself. But don't, doesn't the school, don't, don't we approve all contracts? Well, I guess we don't approve... Well, I guess we don't approve all contracts, just some contracts.
But you're just, but they're saying basically, you can't as a board approve a contract when there's a conflict of interest with somebody in the district, and there's some kind of a relationship there. So, you don't want it there to be a sense of impropriety.
So, the board couldn't contract with my husband to offer comics instruction, you know? The board couldn't enter into a company, a small company that you own to provide yoga lessons? The board couldn't enter into a contract with Skengel Woodworking to do any work in the school? That's how I read this.
That's how I read it, that's how I read it as well.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what about donations?
I just don't, I-
You didn't read that.
I don't read this, so like, what, like, I'm not sure-
It's not in, it's not in here. I'm thinking, I'm wondering if it should be in here? I'm wondering if it's somewhere else?
Oh, there, it will be, you mean, that the board can't donate, or?
Yeah.
I think the board, as an individual, you can do anything a parent can do.
Yeah, why couldn't we donate if we wanted?
I don't know, it seems like the same idea of benefiting personally. It seems like the same concept.
Unless you're, as an individual, you can do anything any other parent can do. But, the board, they're saying that when you come together as a board, it changes, and there has to be concern about potential impropriety.
Are you suggesting, like, so say I wanted to, even like, as a, I'm a board member, and I somehow wanted to curry favor with the board, and I would make a, like, big donation to the PTA?
I guess so. I mean, we have a fundraising policy in place to circumvent people gaining favor and donating inappropriately.
What if it was something along the lines of, a board member could not make an anonymous donation, in the sense, like, if a member from the community wanted to donate $5,000 to the school anonymously, they could, right? So, what if it was like, but, but the board can't? If I wanted to donate $5,000 to the school, I can't anonymously do it as a board member.
Why?
I'm just saying, though, but as far as, this way, but what I'm saying, what you're saying is, because my point is, if you donated $5,000 to the school, it would be public record. It wouldn't be like, it wouldn't be hidden, we'd have to accept it, and so forth, so it wouldn't be hidden, as, so, I don't, I'm just trying to-
I guess I'm just wondering if, if the point of this policy is to make sure there's no board member conflict of interest with vending, then would it also pertain to donations as well as vending?
I don't see that. I just see that, you know, somebody can't use their position on the board to help get contracts approved by the Board of Education.
Right.
I think that's what it's saying.
And what if the contract is not approved by the Board of Education?
Then, it's, it's a moot point, but they're just saying you can't, like, you can't get on the board to guarantee that there's going to be some person that's going to get a contract approved.
Like, maybe there should be something along the lines of, that we shouldn't be able to get any favors from, like, we shouldn't be able to get, like, free oil from our oil supplier, you know what I mean?
There is something.
Yeah.
There, somewhere in the policy, they, they talk about the, like, the dollar value, like, nothing more than $25 or something along those lines.
And that's for everyone, though, within the district.
Any employee.
Okay.
All right. 13:20, I had no comment.
Neither.
13:30, I did have a comment. Do we appoint every one of these individuals every year?
At the reorg meeting.
The reorg, not necessarily calling them all out, we just do it.
It's just part of the consent agenda.
Yeah, every year, they're listed, and we all say, Linda does that, Linda does that, Linda does that, yeah.
Census enumerator and assistants, that was the one that I was, like, we appoint that?
Yes, because there is a requirement, do you remember what the, is, every five years, there has to be a demographic or a census kind, do you remember what the term is? There is something that state ed requires, it's five or 10 years, that there's a call for a census, but we probably would never have to do it, because it's for districts under, like, 5,000.
Oh, okay.
So, if you have more than 5,000, or whatever the number is, you would have, but this district is far below what it has to do to, I mean, we know what this census is, we know who's here.
I thought that was 13.
Yeah, it's all the same.
Oh, sorry. 13:30, second page, I had another one. Okay, that was it for me. We're ending at 13:34, correct?
I was just wondering, maybe if there should be some comment, especially in our situation, where these may be the duties of the district clerk technically, but there's crossover that happens with Linda, and with you, and with Ann, I think, it's my understanding that there's some crossover.
I think the districts are size, there's often crossover.
Yeah, so I didn't know, you know, we say the clerk's duties include the following, and there's a list, but, or maybe at the end, when it says it's intended, not intended to be a complete list. I didn't know if we, anybody thought maybe we should say something about that?
Sure.
It serves as a comprehensive guide in undertaking the duties of this office. Maybe that says enough.
She does a lot.
Was not implying.
Are you saying that-
There could be additional things asked, but these are basically what the norm is for the district clerk.
And it does kind of relate, say it when it says that it's, at the bottom, it serves as a comprehensive guide, doesn't say that it's hard and fast rule. Yeah. Okay.
All righty. 13:32, I'm good with that one.
13:32.
13:33, the same, good.
Yep.
And 13:34, I think we have an awesome independent auditor who follows all of these rules. I think I'm good with that. And then we'll start at 13:35 again. All right.
So, except for the wanting to go back and look at those first handful again, I only heard one requested change, and you caught that, Julia?
With the Bosse's district? Yep, that's him.
Everything else we thought was fine.
All right. All righty, we're going to move into our regular session at this time. Sorry for all the maneuvering, Dr. Bowers. In case anybody's wondering, school's closed tomorrow, so we had a little bit of a-
I was trying to figure out how to do all those things at once.
At once. But, we should be good now for the remainder of our meeting. Okay. Sorry, I'm logging back in here. All righty, well, thank you for coming, everyone, welcome. We have a bit of an agenda ahead of us. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Ann Dineo to give a special presentation on educational rationale instructional segments.
So, tonight, we have part two of our budget development, which is the educational rationale part two, budget proposal number one. It's not, you're just not going to have to listen to me tonight, it's, our administrators are here, and they're going to have a part. Dr. Bowers will be, I think, probably leading, leading the conversation tonight, because we're going to be speaking mostly about regular school, co-curricular, special services, athletics, and I'll fill you in on some numbers at the end of the presentation.
Okay, so, this is the instructional part of the budget, and we, it's really whatever happens within the classrooms, or any curricular connection to the classrooms, the funding for what happens comes from this portion of the budget. It's everything from instruction to supplies, to musical instruments, to field trips, and also the funding that we get from, for textbooks, and the amount per person that comes from the state. So, this is all compiled together in what we're going to be sharing. So, what we have in addition to the instructional pieces, and you've been hearing us talk about this for a number of years, we talk about the staff development that's related to our strategic plan, the initiatives that are happening within the school district, we talk about some of the things that are involved with Bosse's, like Science 21, Arts in Education, and the Environmental Education Program. We then look at the different growth opportunities for our faculty, which are included in this, and how we're using these growth opportunities to move forward with the strategic plan. Some of the areas that we have been spending time and energy with our staff development efforts are listed below, and they are also directly related to the strategic plan. ICT training is integrated co-teaching training, where you have classrooms now that have both a regular educator and a special educator that come together. The regular educator is, has the curriculum expertise, and the special educator has the ability to modify the type of instruction for every student in the classroom. So, they work as a tag team now in many of our classrooms throughout K-12. We also have been working on and have had quite a bit of training for our learner profiles, and if you've been watching what's going on for the last two years, we're going to be entering into year three of the learner profiles, and it's extending out between, extending the boundaries beyond just three, seven, and nine, as you have multiple grades that are moving into it every year. The NTN, Summer Institutes, that is, you've been hearing us talk about the teams that have been going to the New Tech Network Summer Institute. This is one of the things that we're going to be talking about later on. We are looking at saving the, a good portion of the amount of money that would be spent to send our teachers to the New Tech Network next summer. We're looking at the third cohort potentially being educated here, and bringing the trainers back in to this area, so we're not sending people, this is going to be in St. Louis again, and we could save funding on the hotels, and the travel, and the expenses, and it would be the, somewhere between 25 to 35, $30,000 that we could probably spend by educating all that, the staff here. So, we're looking at, that is a potential place for the savings, as we start talking about the need for us to dwindle down a little bit compared to where we are this year. We are also having leadership and coaching training, and the coaching training is very important in this, because we have created capacity within our staff and within our faculty, and a lot of the training that's happening for our new, our new teachers and our veteran teachers are actually, it's occurring by using our own staff. And we have many, we have at this point, five of our teachers that has moved into the coaching training, so they are learning how to coach their colleagues. And so, we have the capability of doing an institute here by bringing staff developers in. We also have moved in the last two years to the three-day institutes that we provide for our new teachers. They are being taught by our teachers at this point. So, we're just talking about expanding that a little bit further, once again, to save money, and, but not to, not to thwart or diminish any of the training that our new faculty will, will need. We are also talking about visitations for teachers beginning their, their training year, and we have had a number of teachers that have gone out for training, but this is probably going to be occurring to a lesser degree next year because of the financials that we have this year. Okay, so we talked about the New Tech Network, some of the things that we continue to support, and we will continue to grow, are the deeper learning experiences that we, we have in all our classrooms, K through 12. We are continuing to acquire, have our students acquire the 21st century skills that are going to make them competitive when they walk across our stage and graduate. Part of the skill set that is necessary is the ability to collaborate and work with, with teams of people, also to, to think through things and come up with unique ideas, innovative practices. We continue to support the concept of a growth mindset, so people can understand that they can develop and grow, and they're not finite experiences that will keep them from developing into a new area. We hope that the fact that our students have been more engaged and continue to be more engaged in learning will be very important, and, as you know, that the New Tech Network, we went into contract with them, the, the cost has been amortized over five years. We are not spending that amount of money of $70,000 this year, but we, our first two years were well over $100,000. And so, since we didn't have very large bills in the beginning, and smaller bills at the end, it was amortized, so that will continue to be one of the years of the cost. And then, we have also talked about the creation of our learner profiles. Excuse me.
Do you have school tomorrow?
Yeah, I'm calling. We don't have school tomorrow. So, we are at the point, again, that we've built capacity, and we can have our trainers and our teachers train, and we have a number of our faculty that are well-versed in the learner profiles, and will, and can help to support this growth and development. And so, the difference between the shift in the New Tech Network costs and the shift in the creation of the learner profiles, and move, using our own staff, will probably be somewhere between 15,000 for the profiles, and about 25 for the New Tech Network. And so, that's one of the areas that we're going to be talking about saving. So, we're still doing it, we're just doing it smarter. So, the construction of the budget, we have been talking about next year's budget for probably the last two months, and we've had individual meetings, we've been talking about the things we would like to see happen in this year's budget. There was a wish list, there were areas that our principals came and really supported and pushed for. Unfortunately, when the state aid projections came out, a lot of the things that they were asking us to consider, they're just going to have to wait. And so, this is, we've met with all the administrators, and now we're at the point that we can share what's happening with the budget cycle. The proposals that are being built, or the ones that we're going to share with you, really need to take the entire district into account, and we were kind of spreading the little bit that we have, we're spreading it out as far as we can, and we're making really finite decisions based on the needs, very specific needs of the district. So, this is a new slide this year, and for obvious reasons, and we have had, recently, in the last week and a half or so, we had a safety meeting, a district-wide safety meeting, where we invited the public to join us. We then had two PTA coffees, where safety and security were conversations, and people wanted to know, within limits, what we can share, what we're doing here, what are our areas of focus, and people certainly shared what they would like to see here. So, some of the things that we talked about are being reflected here. There is, there has been a request, and there's been, there's been many conversations about the potential of getting another SRO for the district. So, we would have two, one for each building, and they could, and they could work together and share. What we're probably looking at, if the board does want to have this conversation, the recommendation would be to have an SRO, which we have, Matt Shelters, and then have an SPO, which also comes from the Sheriff's Department. An SPO is a school peace officer, it's, this is a retired police officer, this is somebody that, they, they do go through the training, they carry a gun, they are here specifically to keep the peace- here specifically to keep the peace and for safety purposes. Matt would be the one that would still go in and teach classes. This is not something an SPO does versus an SRO, and there are things that Matt would do that would just be related to the SRO's duties that the SPO would not. But the difference between the SRO and the SPO, because the SPO is a retired person that works for New York State, the maximum salary that they can make in a year is $30,000. So we could have an SPO for the cost of $30,000, and the only other, and it's usually a first year expenditure, the only other things we'd have to pay for, we'd have to buy the uniforms, and then there is some training we'd have to pay for. So we would pay for a little less than half of what we pay for the SRO would be for the SPO. So if that is something that you have an interest in pursuing, that would be the recommendation. We also talked at these meetings about the fact that we do not have security after school hours, and when we have kids in the building, if they're practicing for the play or they're practicing for sports, or if we have a game that's in the afternoon or early evenings, we are beginning, we're working with different firms, we're taking a look at how we can make it work best for our district. We're actually going to have somebody sitting at the gym entrance from 2:00 in the afternoon to normally 7:00 at night, but if there's a game, it would extend beyond. And so we would have somebody that would be monitoring who's coming into the building in after-school hours, and we would have a sign-in, and we would have very similar kind of entrance criteria, even if there's a game. The people that would be coming in, we'd have to know who's here. And so we're going to start it this year, and we're going to continue on, and we're suggesting that also be for next year. So we're kind of trading off some of the things that we've been talking about with the New Tech Network and with our training for the learner profiles. The funding that was being utilized for that purpose, the staff development purpose, can be freed up and will allow for something like this to occur. We're looking at software and licenses. We also introduced the concept of an entrance kind of computer system where you scan licenses, and then a badge comes out with your picture on it, says where you're going to be going, the date, and so we know who's in the building. And that would also be included in the safety and security conversation that we're having. And we are going to have to look at upgrades of the camera system. I don't know if this would be something that comes from the general budget, or we might want to also consider this as part of the bond referendum, if we want to include that.
Or smart schools money?
Or smart schools. Yes, you can use for security, and we still have some funding there. But that would be an extended kind of situation because we would have to look at what our money, what money we have, we have to then submit it to the state, there has to be approval. And so how long, Ann, would you anticipate that process would take?
Well, considering how long it took to get the original approved, it could be months. There are still schools that don't have their original approved yet, their original application approved.
The process is the same basically then in terms of getting approval for the money, for what we want to use the money for?
Yes, yes, and we've been using some funds now because once you enter an amendment, your account is frozen. So you wouldn't get any reimbursement, and you really wouldn't be able to spend anything that you're talking about until it goes through the three levels of approval. And it was quite lengthy to get it approved.
Yeah, so if we are going to use the smart schools money, we have to realize that there'll be a delay in what we can do.
And Dr. Bowers, you mentioned looking at the Mabel Merit Buildings Security System. Is that included in any of these bullet points? Is that the camera system and integration? Is that part of that process?
No, that's something we're going to be looking at as far as a wireless system so we can buzz people in or out, and we're going to be doing that this year.
So you're expecting that to come from our current general fund?
Correct.
Okay.
Aren't there cameras that were donated? I guess this was brought up at the safety, one of the safety meetings?
Yeah, they said that hadn't been installed. Are you aware of any? That was just something that...
I actually reached out to Gary. He seems to believe that he could locate them. So maybe this is something that we should try to take a look at what we have and see if they're of any use.
Yeah, there are times that people will donate equipment that just can't be used in our systems.
Right, well, that's what I think we should at least take a look and see.
Mm-hmm, we will do that. Okay, so what we're looking at next year, we have 37 kindergartens that have enrolled at this point, so we're still looking at two sections of kindergarten for next year. Okay, we're also looking at some other ways of utilizing our present staffing so we have greater efficiency. We are at the point that we, if you have been watching over the last month or so, that the amount of state aid that was given to us was so minimal that we have a large gap between our rollover budget from this year to next. And so we had to come up with a number of areas that we could look at using the staffing in the most efficient ways that we could come up with. We're trying to limit as much as possible. If we are decreasing staffing in either the teaching or the support services staff, that it will come through attrition as opposed to having people lose their jobs. That's always the preference, and so we are going to have to decrease the staffing. So, oh, here she comes.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. All right, so what we're talking about in co-curriculars, we're looking at bringing in, again, and supporting some new programs and also supporting things that are presently in existence. For the elementary school drama, this is something that we had last year, we had, it's happening again this year. We didn't put it in the budget, but we're going to have to make sure that it gets in there for both this year and next year, and so that's something new. We're looking at some requests in the Arts Department, and we're looking at other clubs that have followed through and met the criteria that we asked them to as they develop. Okay, so pedagogical shifts. Again, we're looking at expanding and becoming ever-present and innovative as we develop our 21st century skills, and this is the whole premise of our strategic plan, and this is the whole premise of our philosophy in teaching. Okay, so instructional media. This also is something that we consider as part of the instructional process, and it's the cost for librarians, books, periodicals, and all the other things that are used in our library media center. And we're going to have to be looking at how, and as you know, we have teaching assistant in the elementary library and a librarian in the library, and we're going to have to look at the needs of the district and figure out how these will be staffed. We are going to continue with a lot of the initiatives, the technological initiatives. There were a number of things that were asked for to increase the amount of technology and the technology use for next year. We had to pare that back quite a bit because we just didn't have the funding in order to move this forward at the rate that we would like to. We also have had numerous talks this year about additional instructional technology support. There have been so many mandates and so many shifts in what districts are asked to do with data and technology and all the things that are part of our day-to-day processes. The state keeps telling us we have to do more and give them more information, but we have to figure out how to do it in a way that's acceptable financially to the district. Each year we find that we add a little more, and it's still not enough, and we add a little more, and it's still not enough. And so originally, when the wish list was created, we were talking about a whole new position, creating a position that would help us with the databases and the information that needs to go to the state and the other requirements that we have for things like NWEA and our APPR program, and all of these things, these are instructional-related practices, but they all have databases associated with them. And where they're great databases and we're using them on a regular basis, they still need support, and we're finding ourselves spread so thin that instead of looking at a new position, we've kind of pared that down to additional technology support of $30,000 because we just can't afford the new person.
I haven't been able to make, actually, I think I've only been able to make one Educational Technology Committee meeting this year because they're scheduled during the workday. It's great to see the development of a five-year educational plan for technology. I would love to see that, the writing version of that. I had to ask, I think, and I think we want to make sure that Leah submits the notes from those meetings to the board because I don't think they make them into the agendas. I had asked her about that previously, and I'll admit I haven't had a chance to follow up with her about it, but I think having both the notes from the minutes and having that written plan would be a great thing for us to have.
And that's kind of a perennial type of situation where we have to, the five-year plan...
Oh, you have to submit that to the state.
And it rolls over on an annual basis, so...
And so it would be easy since you all, that's right, you all have to, that would be easy for us to get. That would be great. Thank you.
So it's not something that kind of sunsets or closes, it just continues to roll into it. And some of the funding that we get for, that is required in order to release the funds. So they make sure that we do it or else we don't get our money.
Thanks.
So these are some of the shifts that we're looking at instructionally as far as Okay, Special Services. And actually, I think I'm going to ask Tony to share a little bit about this. This is, we're here, we're including any of the support services for special education. We're now moving into year three of the Haldane Academy. As you know, the Haldane Academy was housed in Mabel Merit this year. It'll be housed in Mabel Merit again next year. I can tell you that this has been an exceedingly important and productive program for us, and everybody that has entered in to the program is graduating. And so we're at the point that I think we're going to have, this is going to be four graduates between last year and this year?
Five.
Five. And so these are, these students are placed in the academy because there's a concern that they may not make it through, and they are making it through. We actually had one student who was, had dropped out, came back. Not only is he graduating, but he retook Regents exams at the end of this year, so he's graduating with a Regents diploma. And so this is, in some cases, this is an absolute miracle for these kids. So Tony, you want to talk a little bit about what you're looking for throughout your entire program?
Sure, just in terms of the academy or all special services?
Just special services, just kind of what you're looking at doing.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Can't decide if I'm going to hold the mic or just talking to the... There we go. So to add to what Dr. Bowers mentioned about the academy, you can see there under that heading where it says Pilot Year One, Year Two, Year Three, how it's evolved since its inception from my predecessor to how we've developed it as a, it says SEL program there, which is Social Emotional Learning, and a partially integrated, which means partially integrated with the high school. Now that we're back on campus, students can take courses at the academy, or they can take courses at the academy and at the high school, depending on whether or not they have an IEP, and they would benefit from special services and programs that are offered through the main school building. So that's sort of the definition behind that very long "Year Three" title there. And then the deeper learning piece, as we've reviewed before, is sort of the nature of the academy, that they, by nature of how we're re-engaging these students in their education pathway is more hands-on, right? It's more project-based, even though we're really not using that term, but it really is applying what they're looking to do post-secondary in their day-to-day studies. So that, in a nutshell, is what the academy has become and where it's going in the future. And using that as an example, it's kind of an interesting microcosm of what special services is like at Haldane, because year-to-year, special services at Haldane can look fairly different depending on what the student's needs are, as expressed in annual reviews and initial eligibility and, you know, other CSE matters. And that can sway things a little bit, the continuum at each building. So the academy itself has a small group of students, a small group of staff, and that's, I think, one reason why it's evolved so significantly over the last couple of years is because the needs of the students have changed, the chemistry of the students and the staff has changed. And so I think right now we're looking at integrating even deeper into the high school next year and having students taking more courses, and that depends on their annual reviews and how we think their progress has come into the coming school year and how able they are to more fully integrate based on their social and emotional needs.
So as far as the financial picture too, I just want people to know that we're talking about the potential of moving two more students back from out-of-district placements to the academy for next year, and we actually have one student that's tuitioned from a different district that's in the academy.
I was actually just going to say, I know you prepared a report for us, and maybe I'm missing something, but I don't quite understand that report, quite honestly. So I'm still trying to see, there is absolutely no price on education when we're, the stories that you're telling us, right? However, if you're saying here that you hopefully plan on integrating additionally into the high school, and I'm looking at those numbers, I'm not quite seeing the picture. So maybe we could sit down and have conversation and go through that spreadsheet at some point.
Sure. Are you talking about sort of staff integrating at the high school or students or both?
Well, you said that possibly integrating those students more into the high school. Is that what I just heard?
Or vice versa, moving, increasing the number of students that spend time in the academy from the high school. And so we've actually had students that have left and come back, and when they, we can do more of that, and we can have, it can be partial day, it can be full day, but we're also going to have, but they do also have the ability of going into the classrooms if it's something that's not offered by the academy or at the academy. They can come into certain areas, certain classes.
So in terms of the rest of special services, K-12, like I said, that's all subject to annual reviews at the Committee on Special Ed, so I can't really comment so much on the outcomes of that since we just started, that there are likely and unlikely outcomes, and I can't really say anything about a desired outcome because that would be predetermination, which we're not allowed to do under Part 200 of the law. But I can say, based on what we've projected for next year and based on how things are going now, I think we can look at sort of partially reabsorbing some of our staffing costs. As Dr. Bowers mentioned, we have some attrition happening, but using that consolidation to sort of go with the flow of how special services is going to evolve with these annual reviews, looking at reduction in cost, potentially.
So just so I understand what you're saying. So are you saying that there are some teachers that work only at the academy right now, and that if there's more integration, some of those teachers might be able to be reallocated into the high school or, yeah, into the high school?
Partial day.
For a partial day. So that might, that might be the cushion for the attrition that we're talking about. Is that what, am I understanding that?
Well, I think the attrition was mostly in the AIDS and TA piece, but...
Well, the, there are AIDS, but yes, there would be, there's some question marks about. We have positions that haven't been necessarily hired yet, and we're looking to see if with the present staffing we have, we can reallocate, and yes. And for both, both of the teachers that spend the majority of their time in the academy, we anticipate that they will be in other programs as well next year.
I understand. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so.
So I just think, so the budget is a big deal. There's obviously, we know in the very first presentation that there's so much work that needs to be done. But I, I think we are, and it's an anxious time, right? This budget season is, at least from my perspective, it's an anxious time. I mean, we knew this was coming. We hear what you're saying. At the same time, and I don't want to get into micromanaging, but like when I hear talking about like transitioning the academy model that has been so successful, it also makes me a little bit nervous too. And I know we can't cover everything.
Well, we started with nine, Tony, nine students in the academy, and we're down to five. I think it also depends on years, on numbers.
That makes, that actually makes sense to me.
You have to go with the flow in terms of that as well, I would think.
And then that makes sense, needing to be fluid and adjusting. Actually, so I can actually, I feel much better about thinking about it this way, that those numbers are going to rise and fall, right? That's one of the things that we have to be flexible with special education because you don't know. It is the place where we have enormous expenditures and there can be great fluctuations. So the idea of our being flexible in staffing to maintain that program but also cover some of these gaps, sounds good. And I appreciate that.
Yeah. And every year, when we know who will be attending, we can get a much better idea of what the needs are, what grades they're in, what the classes need to be taught, what their social-emotional needs are. And that also dictates what happens in there.
Yeah, going back to my comment about the sort of microcosm, that it really does represent special services in the way that it's kind of fluctuated in its enrollment and its need and its chemistry and sort of the profile of student that it matches. So the year that we're looking at for 1819, it's potential that it could shrink a little further. And also, the existing profile of student might be more applicable to programs in the high school, courses in the high school. But that all depends on annual reviews for some students there, some annual reviews for students who are currently placed out of district, like Dr. Bowers said. So it really depends on a lot of moving pieces that are currently in play. But like I said, the projections that we're looking at right now lead me to believe that that's a distinct possibility, that it could be more fully integrated with some of the staff there covering other areas in the other buildings.
I understand better now. Thank you.
Okay.
So additional components that fall under pupil services, our guidance counselors, our social workers, our school psychologists, also our nursing staff and our social-emotional support services for the district. Okay, athletics. So we are pretty much planning on continuing what we have this year into next year. There, you know, obviously, there are different needs based on the numbers. We do have the funding that we put into the budget a couple of years ago that allows for flexibility if there is need for flexibility. Chris, would you mind talking about what seasons we actually kind of dipped into that funding to allow the students to play?
So what Dr. Bowers is talking about is, you know, throughout the year, sometimes our participation numbers fluctuate. So for example, if we want to offer a JV program, but for some reason the numbers aren't there, and we have a large varsity program, we may use some of that funding to pay for an assistant to help out. So that was the case this year for boys and girls soccer in the fall. And then over the winter, we did that with our modified basketball programs because the numbers were higher. We had two boys teams and we had one girls team with an assistant coach. The girls were intending to have two teams, but after a few practices, some of the girls quit, couldn't make the commitment. And we had to merge the two programs into one. But we still had a large enough number to, you know, need an assistant to help out with the modified level.
But we had those numbers at the modified level because as a board collectively, we said we didn't want cuts at the modified level. So with that comes additional costs. And this is really something I think that we should consider for next year, especially being very involved in that because I had a son. I don't think having those numbers at the modified level is beneficial whatsoever, having gone through the season we did. That's my personal opinion in terms of the costs that are involved with it. And really, there's no benefit.
Well, that would be a clear departure from what we all decided.
Exactly. And I was one of those that said, no, we shouldn't cut at the modified level. Having lived through that program this year, my opinion has changed.
And, you know, it was kind of interesting. It just worked out this way. We almost had our own case study because our girls program, you know, we wanted two, but we had to merge into one. So they had a roster of about 17, 18. And the girls won a few games, were competitive in most of their games. And the experience was, I think, positive. You talked to the girls, you talked to their parents. The boys, on the other hand, had two teams of about 12 or 13. And not only were they not competitive, but it just created more of a negative experience for the kids because it's demoralizing when you can't really compete. The talent was split evenly. And, you know, being a small school, it's already difficult to compete when you just have one team. So when you split it in half, obviously, it's more difficult. Developmentally, the kids were able to practice every day and learned. But unfortunately, like I said, the experience was not positive if you talked to the coaches, the parents, and a lot of the ballplayers as well.
I guess what I'm saying...
Is that, is that the negative experience that you had?
Right. And I guess what I'm saying is, is it worth it to spend that extra money? It's something that we should really consider because it does cost, there's extra coaching, there's extra transportation, there's...
Chaperoning.
Chaperoning. So I'm not sure the benefits that would outweigh the costs. That's what I'm just trying to get at.
I mean, and it would, it would be great to hear from Chris, I mean, not necessarily in the second, but I mean, we are having to make these decisions. I mean, does that, would you concur with that based on your experience, that maybe the board was, could reconsider its position?
I think the intention was good and I think everyone's heart was in the right place. You know, unfortunately, sometimes cuts are necessary, whether it be at the varsity level or the modified level. I think a lot of it depends on how many kids come out for that specific sport, the skill level of the kids that do come out. And then we have to trust our coaches to make the best decisions in the interest of their program because they also, you know, want to see the kids succeed. Sometimes it's difficult to make cuts. It's not something any coach likes. But in the long run, it often is what's better for the program. And even the kids that do get cut because it allows them opportunities to do other things or to have other interests. And, you know, you just give them that opportunity earlier sometimes if you do allow cuts at the modified level as opposed to waiting until JV or varsity. So every situation is a little different. But in my opinion, it really depends on how many kids come out, so.
I think our thought was, at the modified level, the kids don't even know if they like it yet. I'm sorry. The kids don't even know if they like it yet. So we don't want to cancel them out as having, oh, you have no talent, you have no skill, you have no whatever, because none of them do. You know, they're 10. So, you know, so we didn't want to cancel them. I totally get where you're coming from when it got too big. But boy, I hate to tell a kid, oh, no, this isn't going to be, you're not, you're not going to be included in this when it's so early in their careers.
I'd like to suggest that we table this conversation because this seems like a very big conversation to have.
I would agree.
And it's not exactly, I don't know that any of us are exactly prepared to have that conversation.
Actually, do you know the costs? Would you be able to break out the costs of that?
I probably, yes, it would take some time, but I could, I could look into it.
That might be helpful.
Okay.
So to be continued. Thank you, Chris.
Any other questions? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
So I won't make this mistake I made before. I looked at it, I said, worth nothing. And as, worth noting. So some of the things that you've heard us or kind of mentioned throughout that I just want to highlight. We're looking at, again, we're budgeting smarter. We're looking at refining the present faculty and their schedules to allow for maximum impact. You know, we have, in a number of cases, have provided champagne service. And we may not be able to do that to the same level this year. And we may end up moving into, being a little bit more, I guess, decided in the schedules that are occurring. And that will hopefully free up some of the funding we need because we do have a large gap at this point. And that's including the, working with these schedules at this point to try to make for the maximum impact. Right now, we're probably theoretically at about the same place we were last year at this point. Our gap is still a couple hundred thousand dollars that we haven't figured out how we're going to close, what's coming. We do anticipate, and we're going to keep our fingers crossed as we did last year, that we will get some additional state aid. I think for our foundation aid between last year and this year, am I right by saying it went up by $4,000?
Yes.
So that's the amount of funding increase that we got from the state so far this year. So as I remember, last year, I think we got about another $60,000. So that will help, but it won't close the gap. We're going to have to figure that out as well. So is there anything you wanted to say with that? No?
No.
Okay. All right. So some of the other things that we would like to consider in this is we want to evaluate, evaluate the possible recommendations that have been made by the safety committee and the public that we had, share their thoughts with us in the safety coffees. We're looking to refine aid schedules and again, once again, supporting for maximum impact. We're looking at teacher retirement savings and how that can be best utilized with the district as a whole. We're looking at the special education services and any changes that can be made, like bringing back students from outside placements potentially into the academy or back into the district. And those could be quite beneficial as far as closing the gap. And we're also going to see how all of this fits in to the capital project referendum that we're discussing and that we're in the process of building. So that, these are all of the things that have been primary in our discussions through the budget.
Oh, this is mine. It's numbers.
Yep.
Okay. So right now, as it stands, proposal one, which we kind of just described without any, any real numbers adding and subtracting on the slides, is a 2.83% increase over the final 1718 budget. That's using the maximum tax levy increase without going over the cap. And that would be 2.62% increase that the board has already decided. The tax rate percent increase is an estimate because we don't know that until August when the new taxable assessed values come out. So based on last year's taxable assessed value, the tax rate percent increase would match the tax levy increase of 2.62%. We always come in, when the actual tax bills come out, we're always a little lower than that because the taxable assessed values typically rise each year, even though they don't rise a huge amount. There's not a lot of new building going on right now. There's always some addition or some new construction that raises the tax base of the community. And then that in turn lowers each individual tax rate. So right now, we are still looking at $168,000 gap. If you remember, last time we talked about it with the rollover budget, we were almost $400,000 gap. So it has come down quite a bit. And, you know, when I compared last year at the same meeting, the gap was $166,000. So we really are, you know, we follow our years right here. It's nothing that's going to be shocking is going to come up. Again, our outstanding items, our kindergarten enrollment, see how many sections we're going to need. We don't know how many Garrison students that we're getting, although right now, the information that I have, it's a wash. We're getting about, it's projected that we would get about the same amount as who's graduating. As Tony explained, the special ed placements are really under review right now. And that could really swing and really close that gap substantially for us. There are other pockets in the budget that I'm looking at depending on, again, on what mandates and what regulations that I have to budget for next year. There could be additional funds to help us with that gap. And then, of course, we could get a huge windfall from the state. And, and that could, that could happen. So.
So before we go to questions, for our principals, is there, is there anything that you would like to highlight about your programs or anything that you would like to share? Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay.
So I had a question about the, when we were talking about safety. So the SPO. So is that, are we presenting that as though that's in the budget? Or is that something that we need to discuss?
Well, I think that's something we need to discuss. Today, what we did is we really kind of went into the lines of the budget to figure out if the community is, continues to ask for that, where we can get the funding to do that. And so we are not going to be, obviously, can't be business as usual. But I do think with the amount of expertise that our district presently has, we can take a break from the larger bills for staff development. And that will be the place our money can come from for next year.
Yeah, no, because I mean, obviously, we need, we need to discuss it. But I, I would think it would be something that would be useful to have. I mean, I've been saying, it's hard to believe, like only two, three years ago, we were actually debating to get an SRO. It's like my, like that we didn't know if we needed it or not. And this, and now, in just two, three years, you couldn't even imagine not having one. So, so especially, I think that, I don't think the SPO would be a good choice without the SRO. But I don't think you need two SROs. I think an SPO with an SRO would be, would be a perfect, economically, the best way to do it as far as having two individuals. And just one last, on the SPO, you said it, is it, so those are retired law enforcement?
Yes. And, but they still are under the auspices of the sheriff's department and the training that comes and that they undergo is with the sheriff's department.
Are they necessarily retired from the sheriff's office or just any law enforcement agency? And they could like live in the area but been like in Dutchess County or something like that?
I believe that they're, maybe, Matt, can you answer that? Is there anybody that's an SPO that you know that wasn't in the sheriff's department?
No, they have to be a part of the sheriff's department.
Well, in their careers.
From another agency.
Yeah.
But most of the time.
I'm sorry. I thought you could hear me from back there.
It's for the audience at home. We can hear you fine.
They could have retired from another agency, but our SPOs are currently hired by the sheriff's department. And they're under our rules and regulations and training, et cetera. So they could have been NYPD, you know, City of Beacon. But a lot of our guys are guys that retired from the sheriff's department and then went over to the SPO position.
So something that's been coming up, I think, for the board in our security meetings is that the security, the safety and security, we've really been talking about it as twofold, right? We've been talking about it as the tangible stuff, the locks, the SPO, the cameras. But we've also been talking about it with the more intangible stuff as well, the mental health services, et cetera. So I'm just wanting to, I'm wondering if, as we're talking about what we may need for, in the tangible column, can we also talk a little bit about what we may need? for, in the tangible column, can we also talk a little bit about what we may need in the intangible column, meaning the mental health services? And I know that, you know, we have something coming up with the Cove
Cove.
Cove Care. I'm wondering, what would be helpful for me, and I think maybe for others, is that if we could, if maybe if you could prepare for us like a, a presentation on what our mental health services currently are? Like who do we currently have on staff? I know we have a part-time school psychologist and a full-time, and a, what does the social worker do? Could you kind of detail a little bit about what we currently have in place? The prevention educator, what, out of those services, what do we pay? I know the prevention educator has some county, the Putnam County pays for part or all of her, all of her salary, and the Cove Care will have, be
That's county as well.
Be county. So maybe, you know, now I'm not saying right now, but as we continue to talk about budget, I want to make sure that we're also like in the security conversation and the safety conversation, that it's a health and safety conversation, and that we're talking about mental health services along the way. And if we need to come up with funding to supplement our mental health services, to me, that's just as important as figuring out how to come up with funding to supplement our, you know, our security needs. So I just want to keep that a part of the conversation.
Okay. We will have that.
I wasn't at the coffees. I was at the Safety Committee meeting. I wasn't at the coffees, so I certainly don't know what the will of the community was that was spoken. I will acknowledge that I have been less enthusiastic historically about the SRO. No offense to Matt. And I also, and I, but I also want to say, I think, I want to come up to Jen's point. $30,000 for an SPO, if that's what the community really, really, really wants, then I can get behind that. I really don't want what I'm about to say to be taken out of context. Because I personally think on a regular basis about something happening to my child and my nieces and nephews, I don't want to, I don't want to minimize how anxious people are. At the same time, the probability that something like that's going to happen to our children is miniscule. It is miniscule. The possibility that our children could be benefited by a mental health counselor, I would argue, is greater. That's a rational, that's the kind of rational irritating statement that somebody who thinks about numbers all the time says. So I really understand that there are people that aren't going to agree with me about that, but I, I want us, I want us to think really carefully about how many dollars we spend in, we spend towards, towards making the school a theoretically more secure place at the risk of possibly not providing some of the other services that we know our kids need. That's all. But I may be on the minority.
No, I think as a group, we've been talking about the mental health initiatives way longer than ranking on an additional SPO.
And so I want us to think about making those expenses, making commitments to making those expenses. I want us, I want, I'm just starting to
However, I don't think we as a community are immune by any means.
No, I
Unfortunately.
I will say this one thing on the SRO, and not to harp on, on that, is we, we've been at, you know, during the superintendent's search, we asked our prospective candidates about this. And, and the candidates that we brought forward brought the answers that we wanted to hear, which is what we're doing, which is what Matt does, is what Officer Piazza did, is that the SRO's job is not just to sit in front of their car and look tough. Okay? I mean, they're inside classes, they're talking to kids, they're, they're there for support for the superintendent and for the administrators. So they are giving that support to the kids. They're not just walking the halls, they're not there for security, you know, to be the dean, so to speak. So there is, they are providing instructional, meaningful work to the students. So not to minimize what you said, Peggy, but, and, and that's been part of our superintendent questioning, is we want to know how they feel about an SRO. And the ones that, that are coming forward all talked about SROs interacting with kids on a positive level. And, and that's what we want our SROs, and I would assume the SPO to do, correct?
Sure. And mental health directed from a school district, Diana, you can speak to the legalities of it, is a lot different, unfortunately, than what can actually happen. Unfortunately, we cannot dictate a lot of what happens. So what Diana was, Dr. Bowers was trying to do, from what I understood, is to make the services available through Cove Care where it's not necessarily under our auspices, but it is available for the community.
Right.
Where we, as a district, are not necessarily saying, hey, you should, we can't. Am I correct?
Right. You're talking about mandating it.
Right.
Yeah, and that's, it's just part of the equation.
Part of it, right.
Right? The Cove Care is part of the equation. But the, the other question is, you know, are social workers overworked? Do, can they see everybody they need to see? Does everybody have people that they can go talk to during the day if they need to? Are the, are the students being given the support that they need on a regular basis, not just in crisis time, to make them healthy individuals? And that's, the question might be yes. The answer might be yes. You know, I, I don't actually know the answer, which I just want to make sure that we're not overlooking that aspect.
And I don't think, I don't, I don't think any district can say that everything that anybody needs is available. And so that's one of the things, one of the reasons why we began the conversation with Cove Care to begin with. I mean, there are a number of different things that come into play with it. First of all, Cove Care, it's Putnam County funds that pay for it, it's not Haldane funds. It would be, the counselor would be, it's a clinical psychologist, would be here during the school day, probably from high school lunch on. They would also go into the evening, so families and counseling can happen for the community as well. They would house it here. They are, they are under the auspices of Putnam County, and we, it would increase our support services without increasing the funding. But that may not be the only thing we need.
Right, yeah. So I guess that's just, yeah, I want, I would love like a, an analysis on, from your perspective, maybe Dr. Show's perspective on what we currently have. Do we think we need more?
We started this conversation by me asking Evan, how many support, right? I asked you, how many students do you have in your district, in your school? And the support? And it just blew my mind.
Yeah, I mean, we, it's different, I'm sure, here.
Yeah, I mean, the number, you don't need, you don't need a one to 125 ratio, but, you know, one to 450 is, no matter what the district is, as far as economic status, that's a high number.
Yeah. And we have added a little bit. We did add a halftime psychologist, and so we have been moving towards that, but it, right now, there's, there are a lot of moving pieces that we have to consider. So, yeah.
And then along the way, I'm assuming you're not quite ready to talk about it yet, or you would have. But you're saying the arts are asking for some things, the staffing, nutrition might need to change. When will we know, like what, what those things are?
Well, there are a number of things that we're looking at, and I can give you an idea. I know, and the, the arts program, they're, we're looking at putting a coordinator in. I think that's all that's on the docket for next year. Question marks are about continuing our hiring, the position, the additional special ed position that we've hired on a part, on an end of the year basis versus putting up somebody in a tenure track position. That's, there's a question mark there.
That was for the retired
Right.
Teacher that retired in January, that we currently have a leave replacement through the end of the year.
Correct.
So that's the position you're speaking about.
We had a part-time position that, in special education as well, that is, there's a question mark for next year. But that was always, it was just, it kind of filled what we needed for this year. We have four second grades this year. We're looking at potential of three second grades, three third grades, I'm sorry, next year. And the numbers would be about 23, which is a very, a very acceptable number for a third grade class. So that's, there's question marks there. And then we have little bits and pieces in different places that may not necessarily be staffing, but we also, we're looking at teaching aides that are retiring and whether or not they will be replaced. We're looking if we can spread some of our staff that presently, as we said, is working at the academy, both teaching assistants and teachers, and where we could fill that as well. So that's kind of what we're thinking right now, but that's also not the big picture. That still gives us that $168,000 spread, even if we did all of that, this would be in addition to. So we're kind of looking at a lot of question marks, but we're not, we haven't solidified, we're kind of introducing the concepts and seeing where it goes. And I should also say, you know, in the past, we've been talking about what we're going to be adding, and there's no adding this year.
Well, that's not true, right? There's a $30,000 technology person ad.
Yeah, well, I'm talking about
Arts coordinator ad.
We're probably not going to be adding the, the level of teachers that we have in the past. Yes, but you're right, there would be additional time.
SPO ad.
Yeah.
I mean, there, there are ads happening.
Yep.
Potentially.
But not in the instructional side.
But the SPO was not in this budget.
The SPO, right now, it's still in staff development.
In staff development.
But we know where we would go if we went that direction.
It's in staff development, but if you revise the staff development instead of having what we've been, what you've been doing, which is sending folks to the National New Tech Network Conference and doing that, instead doing a train the trainer model with teachers who've already been.
Which I thought all along, that's kind of what the plan was, wasn't it?
Well, we've gone into that for our, for our three-day institutes, all the institutes that we've been hosting here have been train the trainer institutes. We have, we have our coaches doing them. And this is just moving into the next level. And we may, I mean, it's some, it could be something that we're, we send a couple of the coaches to the summer institute so they can then turnkey some of the, the new things that are
Honestly, maybe I'm just missing something, but I would almost say maybe that's someplace that we need to look further into. We've sent our staff three years now. And I thought the point was that they would get trained. And I know every year, things change, and, but within a year, I don't think things are going to change that drastically. So maybe it's something that we really should start to consider, that we have trained teachers here, and start to at least infiltrate to the others, and then maybe in another budget year, we have that conversation about the additional trainings.
And instead of the tuition that we would be paying the New Tech Network, which is included in the, in our contract, maybe we were talking about bargaining that and having them send people to us in place of that.
And how does that contract work? If you don't send people, you're still liable?
If you don't send, well, there's 12 spots that you, that are included in your contract. And so last year, we were able to, because we didn't use ECHO the way that we originally had it, that went to pay for our coaches' training. So instead of us adding, adding different finances to that, that was again, just bargained. And we'll be looking at having the staff developers come here to help our coaches in the training, and that can happen as well. So we are, that's something that as you, it's kind of necessity is the mother of invention, and we're looking deeper into the lines to figure out how to make it happen, even though we don't have the funding. So we look elsewhere.
Feels a little grim, guys. Well, and I guess actually I, if it's, if it's what it's got to be, it's what it's got to, got to be. I mean, I, I completely understand Laura's position, and we do want to be moving, right? I mean, that's the whole idea of building strong professional learning communities and offering our teachers opportunities, you know, and, and opportunities for continuous growth and improvement at the same time? Like, the idea that, you know, this is something that I think, you know, we were really building toward, and, you know, if we can't send people, we can't send people. It's, I, I have to say, I, I think it's kind of disappointing, and I, I mean, I'm not going to, it's not my role to ask the, you know, as a single board member sitting here, ask the teachers what they think, but I, I would, I would be, I would want to make sure that the faculty felt like they're, that, that they're, that the, that the professional development opportunity is being offered them as we continue to build towards this, and I know you're thinking about this, I, but I, you know, are, are enough to really support, you know, are enough to support them? And if not, then I want to, I don't know, there may never be a flush, you know, there may never be, it may always be like this, given some of Cuomo's plans for the future. But, you know, taking a pause for one or two years, I can understand, but I, I want to make sure that, that, that the faculty believe that they're getting the support that they need to meet the continued high standards that we want, that we want them to meet.
And I think the plan was always to, to move to the point where we build capacity and we take it on ourselves.
Right. But not this year. That wasn't the original plan.
Right, that wasn't, that wasn't the original plan. So this would be happening a little bit more quickly than we originally anticipated. And I guess, right now, we're just kind of coming up with the
Sure.
How to make the balancing act work, so.
But I think that the key to the whole budgeting dance is making sure that the pain is spread across, right? That there's no one group or one grade or one club getting the ax, that it's, it's spread so that we're all shouldering the burden of the budget. So I think you're right, Peggy, I bet the teachers would be disappointed, but I think there's, I mean, that list of things that Diana just said, there's a whole bunch of people that are going to be disappointed. You know?
Moving into your superintendent's report.
I feel like I'm chatting away over here.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Although we didn't, it's not on here, but does anybody else have any budget questions? You'll have an opportunity to speak after Dr. Bowers, but being that we're on the topic, you can feel free. Yeah, we can do that.
You know you want to spend the whole evening with
I do. I wish I could. I'm Christine Furch. I'm a mom of a sophomore here, and I'm from Garrison. And I was on the Garrison School Board for six years, and so I know what you're up against, and I appreciate you all. It's very hard to have an honest, productive conversation in public, so thank you for trying, I really appreciate it. And I, and just as you say, spreading the pain, a little grim, but I agree with that. And I, I guess one way that I'd say it, I'm here as a concerned, interested parent, and also part of our wonderful arts booster club, which I've just joined. And so I want to make a pitch for the arts. Maybe I would say it like this, is that next year, when I come back to this meeting, or maybe next month, I don't know how many iterations of this meeting there are, but I hope there'll be a slide that says arts, actually, because there was a slide for special ed, which is great, co-curricular is great, athletics, which is great, and then I hope we'll have one that says arts. Even if the, at the bottom, it says, we're not funding anything in arts. But I think just to have it delineated and that you're thinking about, and that you've articulated the needs, as you very nicely did the other things in the school, will keep it on the agenda and hopefully lead the way for continuing to fund it, because it's such a gem. It's a pearl of the, of the school. And you want to have that signature programs, and you want to attract Garrison parents, and you want to attract this community and moralize it with this wonderful program that you could strengthen more. So I know what you're up against financially, but maybe I'll say it like that. I hope that's what can happen in the future, so, thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
Can I just say, I'm just, I
Can I just say, I think that's an interesting comment, and first, I mean, obviously, we do fund the arts, so maybe that's just something we can add to that slide.
Kind of have a slide.
I mean, we do, obviously, there is funding in the arts, so maybe, I'm sure people, I'm sure other people will see that and say, "Well, what about the arts?" And, you know, they'd be right, so maybe we should, you know, break that out.
Actually, we are moving, we are, one of the things that we've been asked to do is to talk about the potential support for a, an arts coordinator's position. And so we have given the conceptual nod, now we just have to figure out all the other components of it, but, so that's where we are. So there's actually, that conversation's already happened, and I don't think it made it to a slide, but that's something we can certainly put there.
And that's actually what I wanted to speak to. So excellent, that, I just wanted to let everyone know that the membership of Arts Booster is very much in support of this. We think it would do wonders for the district to have a kind of a K-12 arts point person, and it would certainly help our efforts tremendously in having someone that we can really have conversations with, instead of constantly emailing administrators and individual arts teachers, which, you know, we don't want to burden them further. So we hope the board will take that into consideration. And we also hope that in the event of a windfall, come on, it could happen, right? You know? That we decrease the pain across the board, too, and that we really do look at funding for the arts a little bit more closely, because, you know, exactly what you said about, you don't want to say to a young person that you can't play on this team, and, you know, we don't know how good you are. Think about the arts and how it really speaks to all students, regardless of their physical abilities. And we have so much talent in this community, too, that we can draw on. So thank you so much for the work you do.
Thanks. I think one of the things that makes that a little, at least in terms of like when we talk about the budget, is so much of the funding for the arts, not that there, it couldn't be more, or we couldn't think about it differently, is incorporated in the, it's, budget-wise, it's in the, it's in the instructional component with teachers, and that, and so actually, I was even thinking recently, based on knowing, I mean, I guess it's not a secret, it came through very clearly in the community outrage that Bosse's did for the superintendent search. It certainly got me thinking, I know it got some of the other board members thinking about, about this issue, and making sure there's adequate funding. And actually, I realized, I don't, even I don't know sort of how to break it up, because so much, because so much of it, am I, I think a lot of funding for the arts isn't instruction, it's not, it's not separate, and at some point, not now, I would actually like, you know, maybe over the summer, like to increase my own understanding of, I know all the funding for the different coaches, right? Because that's something that's sort of extracurricular, and we approve, but not so much for that.
Yeah, you're right, because the arts and the athletics are always compared to each other. But they're not apples and oranges. Like athletics has this whole other way of being budgeted for, and line itemed for, and it's a whole different thing than the way the arts are in terms of money.
And it's co-curriculars that, as opposed to extracurricular for most of it.
It's co-curriculars, and so, but I think, not now, but at some point, I would, I think it would be good for me to have a better understanding. Poor Ann. She'll be so sad, she'll be bored in the summer, anyway.
Yeah, but I also have to say that our, our principals have been very supportive, and if you look at percentage-wise, we increased the number of music teachers to a .8 position over the last two years. And when you start out with only two, and you add a .8 position, that's a pretty, yeah.
That's a kind of understanding that I'd like to have.
Yeah.
And I think we'd like to have, as a board, maybe, an understanding from the arts community of what you'd like to have, in addition to what we currently have. I think that, you know, it, like you said, it may not happen this year, it may not happen next year, unless this, but maybe we can start moving towards the gaps, bit by bit.
I think that would be a great idea, for us to have a conversation about that, because we've been hearing a lot from parents, I mean, when you talk about how the arts are integrated into the curriculum, that's true, but there's a lot to be said for someone who is a specialist. So for instance, in visual arts, you know, we have grown the music department. In visual arts, there are a lot of parents who, students at the high school level, are looking to apply to art schools and are struggling with putting together a portfolio. And, you know, the same way that you help students with their college essays, the applications, their test prep, to be a visual artist and to apply to an art school, that's, that's a rigorous and difficult process. And so having additional staff here who has experience with that process would go far. And we have, you know, one full-time visual arts art teacher at the elementary middle school, and then I'm not sure, is it a .8 possibly? Ms. Sniffen, you might know that?
It's, we actually have a .5.
It's a .5 in the high school.
About 100% of that person is shared with the notes.
Okay. So, you know, we certainly, it would be great to be able to have a conversation with you in terms of kind of being able to relay some of the feedback that we're receiving from students and parents as well, so.
And that's interesting, that, it was just said that high school art teacher is .5 when most high school students have to take a credit of art.
Art could be music.
Or music. However, due to our scheduling, because I know, I've had a child that's had to manage to figure out, how do I get this credit? Sometimes it doesn't always work out that you can take a music, one year you can take a music, one year you can take an art. I think we should really start to look at perhaps increasing that at least maybe .5 somehow.
Get that to the list.
Yeah.
I'm telling you, a windfall is coming, right? And then we will all...
This is important. You need to have these conversations, because it's not something that I would have just said, "Oh, yeah, he's only .5," but it comes back to you as, okay, so one year, maybe more music could be offered, but then the next year, it's art, but that student that really enjoys the art missed it because it didn't fit into his schedule, or, you know, so I do appreciate.
Right, and we can also, you know, I think the board does a wonderful job of also thinking creatively and outside the box at ways to, you know, create extracurricular opportunities for students, too. But, you know, we have, when you think about just the sheer number of, like, coaches and sports teams, I know this is not apples and oranges, whatever, get that, but, you know, it would be really great to start to at least think about the arts in a slightly more specialized way, that, that teachers who can bring a lot to this district, that that can also trickle down at the curricular level in terms of them helping general education teachers integrate the arts into the project-based learning that's going on here. I mean, that's all...
Talk about social emotional.
Well, I could speak for hours on that point, but I know this is a late-night meeting. So thank you so much in the windfall, we all pray it's coming.
Thank you, Cory.
We're keeping our fingers crossed, Cory.
Okay, now, moving into your superintendent's report, although you've been...
Oh, no, Andrea's...
Okay, sorry. Go ahead.
Just a second. I want to sort of switch, I'm going to switch gears here. I wanted to share, today I was in Albany, and, and so I was, I was participating in a education lobbying day, and so I met with, among other people, I met with Senator Serino today. And I wanted to share with you something that she shared with me, and with the group that I was with. Just yesterday, the Senate passed 15 separate bills having to do with school safety as well as mental health. And so I was encouraged by that. I mean, it still has to go through the Assembly, it still has to go through the governor, but I was really encouraged by what I heard, and it does include things like the, the state mandating SROs and giving, and either raising money through specialized license plates, or, you know, or there's some other, I'm not really well-versed in reading bills, but I was trying, and so I, they had this complicated sort of formula, where the state would actually supply the money towards improving safety measures in school, as well as SROs and SPOs. And there's another bill that talks about, and you may not want to hear this part, but there's another bill that passed that raises that maximum for an SPO to 50,000, raises it from 30,000, you probably don't really want to hear that.
No, that's kind of the wrong direction.
But that was just amongst all, you know, amongst the 15 bills that were just passed yesterday. So I just thought I'd share that with you. And I found for myself, I thought, I was, I was encouraged that they, that they are looking seriously at this, and, and that they are trying to do something about it.
Good.
And it might be helpful, you know, with, with the budget, if it does all pass and go through, you know, that's something that could be helpful for our school district, because it's talking about, these bills have to do with districts that are not a large city district, so it's looking at smaller districts like ourselves, so, thought I'd share that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
We'll give more opportunities later for communication.
All right, so I'm going to add something that was not originally on my report, but you did receive an email today about the fire alarm system in the main building. And we had, we seemed to have some concern about the batteries that were in there, and we were seeing kind of flashing lights with the batteries in the main system down below. And when we called in, the company that services the alarm system, it appears that all the data in the alarm system somehow is depleted, and we don't know how it happened, it's, the potential, or probably the, the logic right now, or the thinking is that it could have happened in the storm. So we are manually kind of creating an alarm system that's going to be, that's going to happen overnight tonight. It's going to, we do not know if this company is going to be able to get down tomorrow to fix it. So they're from Scotia, New York, so it's, it's going to, they're going to be traveling, so if we can't get them tonight, and they don't come down tomorrow, I did call the State Education Department, they, the State Education Department does allow districts that have kind of a manual system of people that continuously rotate through the building to open. So we would probably have to bring three people on that would continue to walk through and make sure that the, that, oh, I'm sorry, that's, all the safety was at the same level as we would with our alarm system. We cannot pull the alarm system, so it would have to come through the announcements. And so if this, if, if we do end up having no alarm system the next time we're back in the building, we will have people that will be revolving around the building, and we will have, everybody will know that if there is a need to let us know something, it will be done via PA. So I'm just letting everybody know that that has happened, and we've done what we need to do in order to understand what a district does that doesn't have an alarm system in place.
And that's the whole building, middle school and elementary school?
Correct. Yep, the whole building. Okay, so, in your package, you have the potential calendar for next year, and this has been, it's gone through our calendar committee, and we were, we finalized it, it went to the entire committee for review, they, everybody's given the thumbs up, so now it's coming to you. And so this is, you can either look at it today and then approve it the next time, or if you're ready to approve it, it has everything that we have been asked to do, I think, that's been included in it.
Evan.
Yeah.
You were the big stalemate last year.
He doesn't care.
He doesn't care this year.
Yes, kids are going to graduate. So, okay.
Is everybody okay?
I mean, for me, it sounds good to me.
And the two-hour delays are the time that's set aside for staff, for staff development?
Correct.
Did that work out better this year, alternating the days?
Yeah, because the same classes weren't missed.
Yeah.
So we did something similar.
So Bosse's is not in the same time?
Right now, we have the same issue I think we had, I don't think it's this year, but last year, where about 50% of the districts are doing one week, and 50% are doing another.
But we were, but we're going against Bosse's this year.
Correct, yes.
Yep.
So, I mean, that was the argument. Okay, so that's, so to see if it's the same concept, is Bosse's following...
This follows the Bosse's calendar.
Bosse's calendar, yeah. We're not against it like we have.
Right. This year is against it, next year...
Right, so that's, so like, so, and that was the point, so, for example, so during our break, the Haldane break, we're going to be providing transportation to the Bosse's kid.
No, because Bosse's is closed with us.
Not this year.
No, oh, this present, yeah, but I'm saying for next year.
Right, so I'm just saying, so, so, so this, that was, that was my, my issue with it, that we were going against the Bosse's, okay? So, because this year, we have to provide transportation to the Bosse's stu, our Bosse's students have to go to school. Our Bosse's students basically don't get a week off this year, they get two weeks of half-days.
Correct.
So that's the difference.
Yeah. But this calendar, I'm, I'm okay with approving it. This calendar is 100% across the board with Bosse's?
Well, as close as we can get, but it's, it's that spring break which is always the problem.
There's testing involved as well, that's part of the issue, right?
Yeah, it's when the tests are, I mean, I'm not sure, I, I think Bosse's, like, we'll have an extra day for Thanksgiving, we tend to do the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and so that may not be the case for Bosse's. So there may be a couple of things that aren't perfect, but it's close.
And we're back to having the Friday before Memorial Day?
Yes, and that's a give-back day.
I know.
But this year, we didn't even have that scheduled.
No.
Oh, right, yeah, you're right.
Yep, so, yes, it's there. So if you're ready, then we can get it to the public, and people will know when they can make their vacations.
The other question was, there was something about the number of half-days that you're able to have in a week.
That changed. Originally, there was some guidance that came from the State Education Department, and actually, when they went back and they reworked it, they did something which was really logical, which you probably haven't heard me say often, but they actually now have a bank of hours that the elementary has to be in session, and the high school, middle school have to be in session. And so it's not counting minutes every week, but you have to have a specified number of hours per year.
Rather than by week?
Right.
Okay.
So, well, you want to add that to the approval?
We'll add that at the end, or we're going to prove it now?
Okay, it's up to you.
I'll do it at the end.
We'll just do it.
Do you?
Yeah.
Okay, so, a lot of this I've actually already talked about, so the second thing I was going to talk about are the Safety Committee meetings and the PTA coffees, and mental health professionals, so we've kind of already gone through that. And this says, "Superintendent's meeting with the High School Student Council and Women Empowered Members on Thursday 3/1," but it really wasn't, I was a visitor, and it was Julia Sniffen, who was the one that coordinated the meeting, and it was a conversation with the concerned students about what we're going to do on the 14th of March. And Julie, you want to talk a little bit about that?
So we had over 65 students in attendance at the meeting, we did serve pizza to them, that helped probably, but they were very passionate, they were very well-spoken. We talked about supporting the students and who they are as people, understanding and us remaining, you know, politically out of the equation, but talking about how important it is to us that they remain safe. And we talked about some different ideas that they had for March 14th, and some different ideas that maybe, you know, we had in regards to sending letters to the schools across our nation that have been affected by this. We talked about some, during lunchtime, some seminars on mental health, and mental health awareness, and mental health first aid. We talked about, obviously, school safety and gun violence came up, the students were very passionate about that. We talked about a lot of different things and ideas, we talked about moments of silence, we talked... We talked about happy notes across the school, positive statements across the building. We talked about a lot of different things. The students were very respectful of that. We definitely have a population of students who respectfully said that they know I have a job to do, which is to uphold the code of conduct and ensure that they're safe. And they were fabulous with that. But they said that they too feel they have their voice and they want to use their voices as well. And I said, I support all the students in finding their voices. But yet, I have a job to do and my number one concern is safety. And I am concerned about their safety, I'm concerned about them being outside, I'm concerned about their safety as it relates to that. And I think that we need to ensure our students are safe that day. I'm not encouraging necessarily a walk out here because I am worried about their safety. At the same time, we will do things in the building from 10:00 to 10:17 in memory of those students that lost their lives. We're working out the logistics of that. I will be sending a letter home to the parents by Friday in regards to kind of listing some of the things here that we are doing.
And that will also be Mary Ann will be sending.
Yes, it will go to middle school as well.
And I will have, I'll be part of that letter as well.
So, that's, that's where we're at. It's been, I think, the students continue to say, we need to respect each other. We said that statement over and over again in that meeting. I said to them, I think that if they can continue to respect each other the way they had in that meeting, and I said, I think at times the adults across our nation aren't setting the best example of respecting each other, I am so proud of them. So, I thought it was a great meeting. Chris was there and Dr. Bowers was also there. We're trying to find other avenues for them to share their thoughts and their feelings and to express themselves. They were grateful that we had the meeting. I think we're going to have to continue this conversation with our students. They have some great ideas. We also talked about bringing in some elected officials to meet with our students on April 20th during lunch, where they can kind of express their feelings and talk about ideas that they may have in terms of their own voices and lobbying for different things. You know, in both sides of the conversation. And the kids were very, again, they were respectful. So, my message to them is, my job is to keep you safe. I feel better that you're in the building and you're safe in the building, but we will do everything we can to keep them safe that day and every day. And we will have other things that they can do to help find their voice. I'm repeating myself. So, I'm going to stop there, it's getting late. Any questions for me on that?
So, the week before we met with the students, I did attend a meeting at BOCES and they had, the superintendents from all the districts came in and the safety department from BOCES presented that day. And I'm, this is more for parents, we've already shared it with the students, but there is, there are red flags that are flying because of the potential of safety issues on that day. And if you know that students are going to be walking out at a specified time across the nation en masse, there's a real concern about that. So, we're going to ask parents to have the conversations with their children so they understand that. And that will be in the letter that's going to be sent home. And we certainly know that the students have a need to share what they're experiencing right now. But we also want people to make sure that we're doing it in a way that is respectful, as Julie said, to everybody, but we also want to make sure that the kids aren't putting themselves in any kind of danger, so. And that will also be 4/20, which is also another day that they are advertising as, you know, sharing and stressing your voice and that we're trying to do something because it is the anniversary of Columbine as well. And so, they're choosing the date for that reason, but there's also a negative component to that too. So, if parents would please sit down and have conversations with their children, it's not just high school students because Mary Ann has been working with the teachers at the middle school because there are some middle school students that have an interest in that. So, it should be any parent that has a child that is aware and has a feeling about what should be done. And there will be things inside the schools to do from across the board, so. Okay, thank you. Okay. And that's about it.
The Board of Ed meeting for March 20th, March 27, 22nd. We originally moved it to the 22nd because there was a possibility that our administrators weren't going to be able to join us.
Yeah, we thought that there would be a conflict with the boys' and girls' basketball if they were going to continue on. Unfortunately, they all both had wonderful seasons, but they will not be continuing on. And so, we can have the meeting on the 20th, the original date.
Yes, we're moving it back.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're moving back to the 20th.
11:53, is that coming?
That's because we're going to meet in executive session to discuss the employment history of several individuals. Any communication from the public? No. Okay, moving on to consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm really moving this long, sorry, was there discussion? Okay.
We're not shy, we'll interject.
Information reports are here for our viewing. Consent agenda financial, may I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unfinished business. Superintendent's search, I don't think there's really much to update. I think at the last meeting we discussed, or the meeting prior, we discussed that the Board has interviewed six candidates, three are being moved forward. Those candidates will be interviewed next week by a stakeholder committee, which was developed through suggestions by BOCES. And each stakeholder is appointing a person to interview. And the Board will also interview after the stakeholder committee has that opportunity those evenings next week, March 12th, 14th, and 15th. Anything else? That's where we're at with that, with the superintendent's search. Just another reminder that applications for the position of trustee to the Board of Ed are available in the district office. The applications are due to Ms. Formularo by Monday, April 16th at 5:00 PM. There are open, two open seats available with a three-year term, July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2021. Trustee Evan Schwartz has indicated that he will not seek reelection and trustee Margaret Parr has noted that she is undecided. Okay, any additional communication from the public? No. Okay, moving on to new business.
So, these are the CSE/CPSE recommendations and the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the recommendations by the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education as indicated below.
I have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the next item is the approval to return the March Board of Education workshop meeting date to Tuesday, March 20th instead of Thursday, March 22nd. And the recommended action is that the Board of Education returns their March workshop meeting date to Tuesday, March 20th, 2018 instead of Thursday, March 20th, 22nd, 2018.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And the last item which is not on the agenda is the approval of the district calendar and the recommended action is that the Board of Education adopt the Haldane School District calendar for 2018, 2019 as presented.
I have a motion.
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, at the conclusion of our regular session, we intend to convene into executive session for the purpose of discussion of the employment history of a particular individual, there will be no action taken.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion, sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, have a good evening. Have a good day off. Good night.